Kingston Planning Board on October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is six forty-five P. M. Start with introductions. To my left is Town Engineer Dennis Quintal, Planning Board Member Rob Trasolo, Planning Board Member Steve Padfield. Peter Coffin does not appear to be here. I will be acting Chair tonight, Robin Dugay. To my right, Robin Carter is our Land Use Administrator. Selectmen's Representative Chris Bashaw, Planning Board Member Peter Bakie, and Town Planner Glenn Greenwood. And we are now joined by Peter Coffin. So before we get started on the folks who are here tonight, there are two hearings who have requested a continuance. So we'll just go in order. The first is Housing Support, Inc., one eighty-six Main Street, MAP R thirty-four, Lot twenty-one. Glenn, do you mind just repeating exactly what you told me?
Not at all.
Thank you.
As I said in my comments to the Planning Board, I was going to try to get Housing Support to withdraw their application yesterday, prior to tonight's meeting. And so I talked with their counsel, Attorney Baum, and he asked the Board to continue for one more meeting, for one more month, because he's concerned that he wanted all appeals processes to have lapsed before they withdraw their application to the Planning Board. And although the appeal period for the variance that they received from the ZB A has closed out by now, he was concerned that there could be an appeal of a building permit process, and he wanted to give that time to go through as well. And so it doesn't really make a difference to the Planning Board. We're not actively looking at this. And one more month is really not a big ask. So I would just ask that the Board continue till next November. And he did say he thought, the way that he had done all of his mathematics, that the end of this week would actually result in the end of all thirty-day appeal periods that they were concerned with. And he said that he would then submit a letter withdrawing the application. So we would have it in advance of our next meeting.
Want to turn the microphone off?
I do. Is it not picking it up?
I didn't see it.
I promise. It's really green. All right.
But to do that, it would require...
Yeah, I'll move then that we continue the Housing Support hearing for until November twenty-first, six forty-five, at Town Hall, with any modified plans being due ten days prior. At noon at Town Hall.
Sir, a second?
On that sixty-five day clock, do we accept jurisdiction on that?
Because they asked for the last continuance, they abandoned the time.
Just start it.
Yep.
Do we want to put a date in that, Peter? November ninth?
Oh, sorry. The ten days prior to twenty-first would be...
Usually it's Thursday then.
Thursday, the sixteenth at noon. Thursday, the sixteenth at noon is...
No, November ninth, Lumen nine, ten days.
Oh, November ninth, yeah. Let's see. That's... Well, the meeting's the twenty-first, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, usually it's at Thursday.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So it'll be tenth, ninth, yes. Sorry, the November ninth at noon.
So that was a motion by Peter Coffin, second by Steve Padfield. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Next is a request for continuance for Hawksbridge of South Kingston LLC, Village at Granite Fields condominium, Mulligan Way, MAP R three, L U four, forty twenty. Is there anything we need to know about that?
That's a request by the applicant.
Okay.
As they figure out what their path forward is going to be with the passing of Jem.
Now, we've never opened that hearing, so is it a continuance?
No, that would be scheduled for tonight.
Right. But it was scheduled before and been continued. But if you don't open a hearing, is it really continuing?
You could open the hearing and just continue it, sure.
I mean, it's a technical point, but I had to ask.
Yeah, we have done that in the past, so sure.
Yeah, I didn't know if that would make a difference. It's relied upon, the variance has passed in February of twenty-two, and so the fact that they got the application and stopped that clock, the two-year clock from going. They're not even living six months ahead. All right, I'll move that the Hawksbridge Village at Granite Fields condominium... Do we decide we want to open it, so we can continue it?
I think that you just asked to do that, so it would require a motion to open the public hearing and then...
All right, I move that we open the public hearing on Hawksbridge of South Kingston, for the purposes of continuing.
Second.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Chris Bashaw. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Okay, and having opened it, I move that at the applicant's request, we continue to November twenty-first at seven o'clock, sorry, six forty-five, with any plans being due to the Town Hall, no later than November ninth at noon.
Second.
Again, motion by Peter Coffin, second by Chris Bashaw. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. So first up is Samantha Snow and Daniel Snow at sixteen Boston Road, New Boston Road, sorry. You're more than welcome to come and sit, yes. MAP R twenty-six, Lot thirty-nine. And this is a site plan review application for a home childcare facility. So the microphone devices you have, you just have to push the button till the light turns green, speak, and then you can turn it off when you're done speaking.
You got it.
So feel free if you'd like to tell us a little bit about what you're requesting this evening.
Sure. So we're requesting a home childcare facility. It's in our residential home. We renovated our basement for a proper space for that. It would be for twelve preschool students, plus an additional five after-school of school-age children. And it would be myself and one other teacher. We are not making any adjustments to the building. We're not building anything new in terms of adding on to the house. We simply fenced in a playground area.
Renovated the whole basement.
Renovated the basement.
Added a bathroom for the kids separately.
Yeah. And I've been in contact with the state in terms of licensing through them, so I have an idea of what the requirements are. And so I'm just trying to meet those requirements. And part of the application for the state is the town's approval for our zone. Yeah.
It looks like we have some comments. So we'll start with comments from the folks who have submitted them and then the folks who are here tonight.
Do you want to do Dennis' or Glenn's?
Sure.
I think that's our usual...
Yeah, so I was gonna...
She's doing department head comments.
Department head, okay. You said it's submitted. The people who submitted and then the people who are here, okay.
So it looks like, if I'm reading this correctly, the Public Works has weighed in. So this is from Phil Coombs, Director of Public Works, in an email dated October thirteenth. And this is R twenty-six slash thirty-nine. "New Boston Road is a dangerous road due to site distances and excessive speed, and the proposed location does not have the needed space to accommodate the vehicular traffic. Additionally, this is taking place at an intersection with another road that has commercial and residential traffic entering and exiting. The plan as proposed would create a more dangerous condition for both motorists and customers, increased by the fact that there are young children involved." Am I reading this correctly, that that was the only submitted comment?
From the department.
From the department. Glenn, do you want to read your comments, please?
All right. So I have cited a new application for Samantha and Daniel Snow at sixteen Boston Road, protect map, and R twenty-six, Lot thirty-nine. The applicant is requesting permission to open a home childcare facility. This is the first public hearing of his proposal, so the Board should consider invoking jurisdiction on the application. Knowing that the instruction is to propose to the home or garage, the application materials suggest the facility would care for seventeen students, which include the owner, applicants, two children. In addition, one additional employee beyond the residents of the home anticipated to be on-site this day. The following are my comments after reviewing the plan entitled, "Flatland and Kingston, Hampshire showing existing site conditions and proposed daycare at sixteen New Boston Road, prepared by Millenium Engineering, and dated eight... Sorry. Okay, you will, are you now?
You didn't have it on.
Are you now, Adam? Number three. The property is located in the Aqua Protection Zone. As a conditional use permit, for a commercial activity must be granted by the Planning Board. The plan should indicate by way of note that the site does not exceed the maximum coverage allowed in the Aqua Protection Zone, and the applicant will be required to get a sign permit from the Board of Selectmen to sign that's proposed on-site."
Dennis?
So my comments were similar. So I got a copy of the plan and the application tax card, tax map, and a copy to D. My comments, number one, the tax card shows the dwelling is having three bedrooms. I presume the sanitary disposal system is sized only for three bedrooms with profit daycare facility. Sanitary waste disposal system design must be approved for this lot to accommodate the additional wastewater flow associated with the business. Number two, although pickup and drop-off program is provided, proposed on item number five, there still will be an issue with vehicles backing out onto the right-of-way. I would recommend a plan amendment where vehicles will not be backing out onto the right-of-way or queuing up along the edge of the roadway. Number three, as part of obtaining a state license to operate, I presume drinking water testing results will need to be provided. Also, a floor plan to show adequate area designated for children to play or sleep separately from each age group. Number four, provide additional solid waste associated that would be produced in addition to that produced from the normal single-family dwelling. And that's all I had for comments, which was similar to Glenn's. Want a copy of this?
Sure. I have a copy of the email.
And did you get a copy of Glenn's comments?
I did. I saw it right before we came.
Okay. Is there anything sort of in response to their comments that you'd like to offer?
Of course. So I guess if we start from the Department of Public Works, I know Phil Coombs had said that New Boston is a dangerous road, which it absolutely is, I'm not going to argue there. I know that the posted speed limit is thirty-five, and people tend to go much faster than that. We are at the start of New Boston, so, I mean, people don't always get up to full speed that they do travel. And then Smallpox Road across from us is a dead-end road, so even though there is residential and commercial traffic going through there, it's not a throughway. There's limited houses on that road. So that's sort of my thoughts on that. My husband and I are comfortable with considering either adding a paved area to the side of our driveway for a turnaround or even possibly a semicircle in the front so that cars would enter and leave in one direction, and they would be forward-facing onto the road. In terms of the waste, I did, I saw the comment a little late, so I just grabbed our septic plant. So for our septic system is actually the size that would accommodate a five-bedroom home, and we had it installed... Where's the date on this?
Yeah.
I want to say it was two thousand and...
Twenty nineteen, March.
March twenty-second.
Two thousand and nineteen.
Two thousand and nineteen. So it's a fresh system. We've already had it pumped. We take regular good care of it. And the bathroom that was installed in what will be the childcare area was installed with a grinder pump to sort of help accommodate the septic system and make sure that the solid waste is being broken down. The parking plan that I presented was to basically operate on a stagger, drop-off, and pickup so that no more than three families are assigned a specific time. Right now, I do operate as a license-exempt home childcare. The state requires you only to get licensing once you take on more than three plus your own. So I do have three families right now, and the three seems to work well. They haven't posed any issues. We haven't had any issues with the parking. I would also consider requesting a license at a smaller capacity, like possibly only the twelve preschool students and not adding the additional five after-school. If the safety was an issue, of course, we don't want to put anybody in harm's way. The water, there is a section of the state application that requires us to get our water tested, so that will be part of it, something that they will review and that the health inspector has to check to make sure that it's on record. Trying to think of what else. In terms of solid waste, so once the town switched over to having the recycling bins, we find that our solid waste disposal is much less now. So we do have the space in our current residential bin to accommodate the additional trash. So between recycling and composting, we tend to be able to limit our trash impact on a weekly basis. What else was there? Yeah. I mean, I know what, understandably, the parking is going to be the biggest issue. And so, like I said, we're willing to explore different options in terms of that.
Even essential pickup and drop-off. Like, we have a three-row SUV where I can meet them like a shopping mart. I work from home, pick the kids up, bring them in the car, go to the house, and then send them for drop-off. So there's, it's safe.
Thank you. Any thoughts or comments from the Board before we open it up to public comment?
From my perspective, the requirement in the NHDES administrative rules is ten gallons of septic flow per individual. So since I removed the two children that live in the home, getting from the seventeen to fifteen, that results in a hundred and fifty extra gallons of effluent from the way I was calculating things, which would more than be covered by two additional bedrooms designed into the system over the three that are in the home, because it's a hundred and fifty per bedroom, correct? So that's designed for three hundred gallons of additional effluent, which is more than...
How many bedrooms do you have in the house now?
Three. Three currently. And the septic tank is a fifteen-hundred gallon, and our field is over three thousand square feet. I mean, I just did a Google to see, but I think that it is...
Yeah, having the system designed to the five bedrooms, from my perspective, covers the sanitary flow issue.
Yeah, at least we had copies of that. We wouldn't have to make a comment.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't think about it in the beginning. And plus, half the children will be in diapers.
Did you have some?
No, actually, that was a question I was... You talked about bedrooms and Glenn had talked about orders. This is a commercial versus residential thing. So to answer this, may I also tell them the zoning chart, which is what you mentioned, it was an example of protection zone.
Oh, yeah, they listed it to the...
They listed a C three. And it's in the method of need to do, so that's not a requirement.
And I did submit a sign permit. I haven't heard anything.
No, they actually put it...
Okay.
The Board of Selectmen put that on hold because they can't act on that until a site review process is finished anyway.
Okay.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that they understood that we don't grant a sign permit even though we ask that they show the location of the sign on the site plan. All that does is show where it can go, and then the actual allowance for the sign itself is done through the Board of Selectmen. I wanted them to be aware of that. And that's why you haven't heard back yet.
Well, then, the only other question I had is, do you feel this is, do you, Dennis, feel this is ready for some jurisdiction, so we can deal with...
I think you can't assume jurisdiction.
Okay, I'll move that we take jurisdiction on the proposal.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Steve Padfield. Any further discussion? I wonder if she'd like that explained.
Jurisdiction just means that we're accepting the application as being complete enough. It doesn't mean, it might not need some changes, but in order to, one of the first things you're going to need is a CUP for the Aqua Protection Zone. And we can't even discuss that until we've accepted jurisdiction. So that's our way of saying that we've officially accepted the application and that we're ready to discuss and move forward with it.
Thank you.
Is that close enough, Glenn?
Yes. And I've got to say, it's Samantha, right?
It is.
Samantha did a great job working on this application. She was very diligent in getting the things that our application process requires. She did, she met with me more than once. She's been very diligent from that side of us.
So there is a motion on the table to invoke jurisdiction. Any further discussion? I think we said no to that, or anything, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it out loud, anyway. So when Glenn and I spoke earlier, I'd asked about sort of the, which comes first relative to the state licensing versus our ability to review the plan? And we can make it a condition, but I'm wondering if the license application has also held up an approved plan with conditions, if one of the conditions is state licensure. Is that going to be problematic?
Yeah, did they give you any indication of that?
So I didn't get any, like, word-of-mouth advice, but I did bring the paperwork that they require from the town, and it does have a section for comments or restrictions. It basically is broken down into two sections, and you either fill out section one or two. One says the childcare agency listed above conforms to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Yes or no, limits on children in care. The second option is the childcare agency listed above has been approved by the zoning board of adjustment, with restrictions, yes or no? And then you indicate below or a separate attachment. So I'm guessing that's sort of where we would be at is with the condition that we would come up with a solution for parking. But other than that, I don't know.
So it does seem that the state is not going to act until there's some indication of the town's feeling on the proposal.
So we wouldn't necessarily then need to make that a condition, is that...
No, I think we just need to discover where there is a level of safety on the site.
So you mentioned potentially a semicircular driveway or expanding the driveway, and I'm just curious where you would imagine that sort of sitting on the plan.
So if we extended the driveway, it would go towards the side of the driveway where the house is not. So it would sort of extend. And we are going to run into an issue with having that wetlands there. So I think that might be an option B for us. So if we go with option A, which would be a semicircle, we would be moving the mailbox, removing that front shrub from the front yard, and it would essentially come from the corner of our current driveway, circle, half-circle, or whatever, towards the other side, trying to not run into the issue with being within twenty feet of the property line, because I know that's a whole other issue. So we're trying to avoid that. I did get a quote to have the semicircle done, so it sounds like it is possible in terms of like an engineering perspective, because I wasn't sure based on where our well is situated too, could come up with an issue just because it is right there in the front of the house. And we only have about thirty feet from the roadway to the porch steps to be working with. So it is going to be tight. But again, I was in contact with K Patterson Paving Company, I think it is. And they had sent me a quote to have it done, so.
So I guess I have a question for Dennis or Glenn. I mean, I know the safety concerns are preferred for having them pull out into the roadway, but is there a legal requirement for it from the state? Because I know there's not one for residential purposes, but is there a legal requirement that businesses are able to pull or a business use in a residential mix required to pull out? And I get it, people speed on that road, but I don't think they should be punished for people's apathy of existing laws.
I could just say that with a town road, you go by the town requirements. And there isn't anything, I don't think, that separates it from residential business or anything like that. It's having proper site distance, that's the important thing. I think the advantage that they have is they're on a curb where you can see both directions pretty well. So it's a matter of just being able to, like you said, get the cars in there, unload, and then be able to get back out safely and being able to see in both directions, the proper distance, so.
And I agree with the child drop-off situation. If I was a parent bringing my kids there, I'd probably want it as easy as possible, but I don't want to put a prohibition on their plan that hangs it up if it's not a legal requirement.
Yeah, I think a compromise to, I'm sorry. Do you want to respond to that?
I just wanted to add, because I know that Robin had actually brought up an email to me, the traffic impact of cars sort of piling up, like, waiting for drop-off. And that's where having that road at the intersection for us is actually really beneficial. So in the plan that I presented for parking, and it's in my parent handbook, they have to sign it. I fee them, like, I put fees on them, they don't follow it, is that they have to use smallpox as a turnaround. It's a dead-end road, we go all the way down to the cul-de-sac. And then that way, they can sort of use that as a way to not be stopping on New Boston, waiting to pull into our driveway.
And I will say, that was my initial concern until I saw your parking plan, was that it would create an illegal standing situation with people staged on the side of the road if you didn't have them queued up to go in there at appropriate times? Because I know there was a daycare on your way to Exeter that it looks like they changed their driveway configuration because they had a... their driveway configuration because they had a staging and queuing problem, because there was twenty cars backed up on the side of the road every morning and afternoon over there. So, I was glad to see that you put that in there, because that was really, that was my bigger concern, and, and, and the reason that I'm, you know, I'm kind of just advocating on the other part for the parking is, it is tight in there, you know. I, I'm sure you would prefer to have an option for them to turn around or a semicircle. I just, my preference is not to make it a requirement of the application if, if you're unable to do it, if it's not required by law or ordinance.
Right, and you mentioned a turnaround, and that may be the simplest solution in dealing with it, is, because this looks a lot like my parents' driveway in the house, and they put a little, actually, it turned out, for them, a parking area, but right off the driveway, but it enabled you to back out of the garage, or back out of your parking space, and pull in there and turn around, so you're not turning around on the road. And I think that would, that would be a really good idea. As Chris says, you know, if it's not in our ordinance, is, you know, we do grant driveway permits, but, you know, I, I think it would certainly allay a lot of the issues, and certainly reduce your limit of liabilities, if you provide a place to turn around so people can see. Especially cars, modern cars have so much structural metal in the back, they block, and because of the aerodynamic shape, they block the rear view that used to have in the old cars, you know, unimpeded. And, I just think it would be a whole lot, a whole lot better. But, I guess it's up to you, as long as, as, I don't know, the limits of driveway permit applications, but the permits, the, the driveway requirements mostly have to do with width and, and subsurface materials and stuff, so, and, and the junction of the road. I, I, I agree, I don't think we can require that, just to, it's a recommended, good idea.
I've never been a big fan of forcing people to spend time and money on stuff based off of feelings and opinions.
And even if it wasn't a requirement of it, it's still something that we want to do down the road. We do want to make it easier, make it, you know, more functional for parents, so.
But if you planned around that with either the, you know, staggered drop-off and/or the staging at smallpox, that seems like a, a good short-term solution.
If I could, I just, I just, in response to your, your question, Chris, it isn't, I don't believe that we have in our site plan review rights, a statement that says you can't back onto a road, but the very premise of site plan review, and in the opening statements, is that site plan reviews are done to ensure adequate design and safety of every, of each site. And that's why I, I think that this is an issue that absolutely comes under the authority of the site plan review regulations for the town. And not to be combative at all-
Oh, no.
-but to say that it is a clear premise of the authority of site plan review.
I just want to say that I do agree, and I've, I've sold cars for a long, long time. These cars have pedestrian, and, you know, the cross-traffic warnings, and backup cameras that are panoramic, like, it's not like it's early two thousands or late nineties.
I understand that.
These cameras, like, I literally don't even have to, I do, I don't have to look out my right side or my left side to back out on my road. I can look at my camera, I can see fourteen New Boston, and I can see, you know, ten New, it doesn't matter, like, you know what I mean, like, I can just back on my road. And I do it every day, multiple times a day. Nobody does a car like it used to be. So, it's, I, I understand safety, a hundred percent.
And I understand, I understand what you're saying, my wife's, she can't.
Half these cars-
It doesn't move, I don't think.
Yeah, half these cars park for you.
The one that picks up a car, it just, it just, the parking brake somehow.
Exactly. That's the pedestrian crossing, yeah. That's the pedestrian crossing. So, when there's someone, a kid running behind, or a car coming behind, it automatically jams the brakes, and you can't go anywhere. I have to turn it off my car, because my car is manual, and it stalls, and I'm stuck in my driveway. So, all these cars have these technology where we don't really have to focus too much on that, it's mainly the drivers on the road. That's all I can say.
Uh, we've not yet had public comment, so, is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak to this proposal?
I was anxious one more for-
Hi.
Do you mind, yep, so, do you mind coming up and just, um, giving us your name, address, and officially stating that on the record?
Sure.
So, if you want, yeah, I think there's an extra chair right over there, and just steal one of the microphones.
Enjoy the real life.
You can have mine.
Yep.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Brett Williams, eighteen, New Boston Road.
Brett, B-R-E-T-T?
Two Ts, yes. I've listened, I've heard, New Boston Road is thirty-five miles an hour, it's not on them to make them slow down. If it's not against them, safety-wise, as far as, as you were saying over there, then I don't see anything wrong with it. It doesn't bother my property, and congratulations for what you're trying to do. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment from the public? Close public comment? And, any further discussion from the board? We've got a conditional use permit to tackle, correct? And then-
Yes.
Do we want to start there? Okay. I'll grab my binder, because I don't see anybody else.
It says two oh one dash one is the, uh-
In my book, it's in, on two oh one eight.
Two oh one what?
Two oh one dash eight.
zone district are permitted only after a conditional use permit is granted by the Kingston Planning Board. So, the conditions to be met, that says the planning board may grant a conditional use permit for those uses listed above only after written finding of fact, are made that all the following conditions are met. So, I will read through these, and we can make a determination of whether or not they've met that conditional use, we'll vote on, vote on them individually. So, we'll start off with conditional use number one, or A, is the proposed use will not detrimentally affect the quality of the groundwater contained in the aquifer by directly contributing to pollution, or by increasing the long, long-term susceptibility of the aquifer to potential pollutants. And I guess, I guess before we move motions, based off of the applicant's responses to the septic design, and do we see any concerns with any of these from either you or Dennis, based off of, you know, the, the newer septic system involved?
It seemed to me that, as long as we, as long as, as far as, from my perspective, I don't want to speak for Dennis, but from my perspective, I thought the only thing that could get impacted under this process would have been an inadequate septic system. And from my perspective, I think we've been provided evidence that that's not a concern.
Dennis? Same, okay, then what I'll do is, I'll read these, I'll read these as a motion, each one, so we don't have to read them all numerous times.
Thank you.
So, then I will make a motion to affirm that they have met section A of the conditional use permit, the proposed use will not detrimentally affect the quality of the groundwater contained in the aquifer by directly contributing to pollution, or by increasing the long-term susceptibility of the aquifer of potential pollutants. Uh, I move this based on the evidence submitted by the applicant in their application, and the evidence that they've testified to tonight about the updated septic design system, and that seems to satisfy the needs of the town engineer and the town planner.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Baiki. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
I will move to affirm that they have met section B of the conditional use permit, the proposed use will not cause a significant reduction in the long-term volume of water contained in the aquifer, or in the storage capacity of the aquifer. This is based on no concerns brought forth by the town engineer, the town planner, and with this being in a pretty substantial aquifer zone.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Baiki. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Also, passed unanimously.
I will move to affirm that they have met condition C of the conditional use permit, the proposed use will discharge no wastewater on-site, other than that typically discharged by domestic wastewater disposal systems, and will not involve onsite storage or disposal of toxic or hazardous waste as herein defined. This is based off of the application information available to us, as well as the updated information regarding the five-bedroom septic that's been installed, that would be able to handle the septic load for the proposed use on the site.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Baiki. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
I move to affirm that they meet section D of the conditional use permit, the proposed use complies with all of the applicable sections in this article, being that no issues were brought forward regarding this from our town planner and town engineer.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Baiki. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Another, passed unanimously.
I move to affirm that they meet the conditions of section E of the conditional use permit, a hydrogeologic study shall be submitted for uses whose septic system is designed for more than twenty-four hundred gallons per day in zone A. A study shall be submitted for any septic system designed for more than two thousand gallons per day. This is based off of the fact that the system being submitted and the calculations would not exceed the limitations as outlined in section A.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Baiki. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Also, passed unanimously.
I move to grant the conditional use permit as outlined, after the board has voted to affirm that they have met the requirements in section A through E as proposed on the plan.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Baiki. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Also, passed unanimously. I had to stop myself from saying Chris Baiki. All right, so that's all set, and now, do we want to tackle the, um, I've completely lost my train of thought here, the, uh, request that is before us?
So, I guess I would just, you know, before I move a motion, I'd rather go for the, the preference of the board, you know. I, I'd be ready to move a motion encouraging a, 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 a better parking situation that has safety, but, and not tie it, but if the board's preference is that we make some type of improvement, whether it be the turnaround or the semicircle, I would motion that. I just, I don't want to create a motion that the board's not comfortable with, so if the board's consensus is that they would prefer that some type of parking improvement be made for the safety of pulling out, I'm fine moving that. Or if they felt comfortable with me putting it as they're highly encouraged to, I would move that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in, in favor of making it a condition, just because, as Glenn pointed out, we, you know, if this is any other commercial site plan review, we'd be discussing quite a bit of the, the design of the roads and stuff inside the parking areas and things. And this is definitely, you know, a, yeah, it's a current residential use, and I think, as you point out, it's, it's safe if you have a backup camera, and, you know, you're careful and everything else. You just don't know what the driving ability is of the people that are your clients, and I really don't think that you want to put yourself in that situation, or that we as a board want to encourage that, uh, people backing out into a town road with kids on, or any, anybody backing out of town road, regardless of the site. Unfortunately, people travel too quickly, too distractedly, and, you know, they, they may not see a car that should be clearly visible, pulling out, backing out in front of them. So, I, you know, I would prefer it be a condition of approval, the, and I'm not sure how to word this, but, uh, a turnaround or a arc of some kind to allow cars doing drop-offs and pickups, drop off and pickups to pull out headfirst.
Looking, looking at the plan, just, just to, I'm not familiar exactly with your, I know, I know where the house is, I'm very familiar with the area, but it almost looks like there wouldn't be too much of a problem for, for a little turnaround to the right of the driveway, to the garage, almost like that hammerhead?
Yeah, to the right of the driveway, it's about there, and, sorry. Yeah, to the right of the driveway, it's about there, but it, it would take a lot of buildup, and then, we were thinking that, because the driveway can hold three cars-
Correct.
-and then they could back up, and then pull out one by one.
It's not necessarily, it's not, it's not necessarily, the way I'm looking at it, to be honest with you, it's not necessarily the ability of the drivers or anything else, but, uh, one thing you can have an issue here as well is snow, snowbanks- Correct. -and when people try to back out of that driveway, and I think, I actually think it would actually help you legality-wise, you know, you're, you're drawing a venue where you're inviting people to your house to drop kids off, so I do think you're probably required at some point to look out for their best safety. So, I don't, I just don't, I'm, I'm just curious if that little hammerhead on the right-hand side, or whatever you want to call it, would give them the ability. Now, if somebody doesn't want to take that advice, and wants to drive open traffic, that's their own fault. But I'm, I kind of agree with Pete, that it just, it would be an option, and I, and I just don't, instead of trying to build an arc and all this other stuff, you know, just, I think just giving them the ability to turn around there on that right-hand side may help you in the long run.
Yeah, and that-
Just my thought.
Peter brings up a good point about the, the liability. Your standard of care for a business invitee, which is what your clients are, is significantly higher than that of, of a guest coming to a dinner party at your house. So, uh, that would certainly work in your favor to, to provide adequate safety conditions.
Do you require a permit?
This, uh, would, modification of a driveway-
It would, modification of the driveway would require a driveway permit.
Driveway permit, we're the driveway permit granting authorities, so, we could grant that, but, but they have to design what they're gonna do, and submit it to Phil, and it could just be a condition of approval on our part, and then Phil would have the ability to grant the permit, based on the plans they submit.
Okay, so I guess, and, so I'll, I'll move it, you know, I'll make, I'll end up making a motion here in a moment with that as a condition. I just kind of want to make sure we have any other conditions. Would it be appropriate, Glenn, for it to be noted, just have them get it noted on the plan referencing the updated septic? Would that be an appropriate condition? And then, just, does the plan, just maybe a note on the plan that says they will follow the proposed, uh, drop-off parking plan schedule, as to not create stage, you know, people being staged on New Boston Road? Would that be, would that be problematic to include that as a condition?
No.
Okay. Anything else anyone can think of before I move this?
If they changed their drop-off schedule, they're not to vote?
No, I, I think the drop-off schedule, as long as they maintain a drop-off schedule that doesn't create a traffic hazard.
I can craft, I'll craft a motion to just make sure that they maintain an adequate drop-off and staging plan that doesn't result in people being parked standing on New Boston Road. Anything else you think needs to go in there? Glenn? Glenn?
If the idea that they could do additional construction.
Is the idea that we're saying that they could get closer to the wetland on the right-hand side?
What is the wetland setback?
In the construction of this driveway?
Did we get an evaluation of the wetland, what the setback is?
Because the planning board has the, they have the right to grant a conditional use permit for construction in areas designated as wetlands as well as in areas designated as buffer areas to wetlands, provided that the conditions for a conditional use permit So if that is what the board is proposing, then the board should really look at the conditional use permit language found at 202-6.
Yeah, okay, we looked at that, but did we ever get a setback department for this, you know, evaluation of this wetland?
No, because there was no new construction proposed, so there was no need for such.
So, here's my question. We have a driveway that can suit four cars, right? Two by two. We also have a garage that can fit both of our cars. Technically, they can all pull in and do a three-point turn right in that driveway. I can do it with her Highlander, a three-road Highlander. You can pull in, back up, and drive right up. So why, if we have a staggered drop-off, excuse me, with say two families at a time every ten minutes, why do we have to spend tens of thousands, well, 10,000 or more for all this, you know, construction and pavement to get put in if all the families they do is just have staggered drop-offs and they're bonded by contract? It makes little to no sense to me to spend that much money upfront.
Well, I think there's, and how they drop off, in other words, providing, if you have an agreement with them that they will head out of your driveway headfirst and you can enforce that, again, I just spent last Saturday parking cars in Epping and, oh my goodness, the people cannot, have no idea of where their cars start and end and or anything else. It's just incredible. But, you know, if there's room on your driveway for cars to come in and turn around and back out, it looks like it's about a 20-foot driveway according to...
It's about 20 by 30.
Yeah, it's about 22 by 30 something.
Yeah. That people back in to drop off.
No, no, that would create way too much traffic because then they would hold, if there's traffic behind them, it creates a lot of traffic then backing in. Honestly, but they could just pull in, because we put our cars in the driveway, I mean, in the garage, excuse me, and they're easily, you could just pull in, have enough room to pull in a diagonal, no problem, back up, back up, and then pull out. It's, it's pretty, pretty straightforward, like, our cars go in the garage, so they have that whole driveway space to themselves. They can't be at that much of a risk, honestly. And you know what, to be honest with you, you know, people pull into convenience stores all the time and they back right out on the road. Look at the convenience store in Exeter on one, was it 110? Going to the hospital, they back right out all the time. There's not, like, I know it's not Exeter, it's...
I think just one of the concerns is...
I mean, one of my concerns, when I look at it, when I pull the aerial in the satellite, I get to 20 feet, but it's just that you have 17 students coming in and I'm just a bit concerned that you got two in the driveway and one pulls up on New Boston Road and dumps the kid on the road, and that kind of freaks me out a little bit.
Which I completely understand, that's why you have smallpox, right?
I mean, maybe just a slight increase in the driveway, I don't know, maybe tens of thousands or some kind of, you know, just a little half circle, just a little more pavement so, like, they could come in a diagonal, back right out and go, I'm with you on that, but I think it would take just a little more pavement from what I'm looking at from here. I'd like to see it on the plan, but from the aerial, the driveway, I just don't see them, it looks like they'd be coming across the grass to pull in, maybe in a diagonal, and just that little more, only because, again, it's, if you're talking five kids, I'm with you, but if we're going to go to 16, 17, just a little more would make me feel comfortable because, again, I can tell you're going to be very, very pay attention to who's pulling in and out. It's just that one person that gets me nervous that, you know, we've all seen that. Hi, door, why? Lost the road, there's a kid jumping out and someone's on their phone and it just, it would make me feel a little better, I think. If some kind of proposal, something similar to that.
Can I ask what the requirement is for that surface? Like, is it gravel surface?
I was going to suggest that perhaps, and this would debate the, what's that? Gravel, gravel's okay, right? It's...
My comments would be, I wouldn't recommend going closer to the wetlands. I would recommend going the other direction and going toward the front of the house and making a horseshoe that way. You could easily do it with gravel, strip the topsoil out, level it off, put gravel in there. I don't think it has to be paved and it's, traffic's going in and going out and not backing out or backing, turning around where any children that could be around could get backed over, but it's always a hazard that I've seen in picking up my grandkids is one-way traffic in and turning and one-way out. And so I think it would be a lot safer to have it that way than to fill toward the wetlands, but again, that's just my opinion.
That'd be my preference, too. It'd make it a whole lot easier.
I think it would be simpler and easier and I think a lot of the people that are coming there would make it easy for them to be able to drive in, drop off, and then pull right out.
I do agree, and I think that it would help actually follow the staggered drop-off because people are late, let's be real, people have a hard time, their kid doesn't want to get their shoes on, and so having that sort of one-way will make it easier for us to assist in getting the children into the building.
And having something like that is the ability to have maybe two or three cars there at the same time, too, and not being out onto New Boston Road. So having a horseshoe like that that goes in front of the building and come back, coming back out, you probably would need a driveway permit from Phil, but I think he would go along with it. And I'm concerned with, or I'm listening to what Phil's comments were, he's very concerned about it, too. So any input you can get from Phil that would help you out, I think would be very important.
Ready for a motion?
I am.
No pressure, I just, you've been working on it.
Okay. So I will make a motion that we grant additional approval of the plan as presented with the following conditions. That the septic, the updated septic design with the five-bedroom septic be noted on the plan. That it be noted on the plan that the applicants will take proper procedures for drop-off and pickup to prevent people from illegally parking or standing on New Boston Road. And that the applicants will make improvements or expand the driveway system to allow for an ability to either turn around or create a multi-point entry and exit that would allow them to exit forward to New Boston Road. With, I mean, I think we need to give them some time to meet the conditions, especially since the time of year we're in right now and it's processed quick, I don't know how quickly we'll be able to get the driveway stuff done. Do you think you would have any problems getting, accomplishing that within 180 days?
Yes, we'll be fine. Go back and take the...
Is there anything else that needs to cover up that motion?
I would love you to just ask if they have noted that it says they're not exceeding that.
Is that, yeah, that's right, and the plans should also note the CUP approval granted tonight.
Yeah. The only permit that's been granted, we just granted earlier, and indicating that they will comply with any of the previous law restrictions for the aquifer protection zone. Are they here, people?
Oh.
Sorry, Adam. So since my, I'm just going to reiterate this since my mic wasn't on. I make a motion to grant conditional approval for the plan as presented with the following conditions. Conditional use permit being issued tonight being noted on the plan, the updated septic to the five-bedroom septic system being able to handle the proposed septic load noted on the plan, a note stating that the applicant will ensure proper drop-off and pickup procedures to ensure that no vehicles are illegally parked or standing on New Boston Road during pickup and drop-off, and that they will make improvements to the driveway situation to either create a second entrance for a multi-point entry-exit but, or be able to turn around to be front-facing driving out onto New Boston Road. With the mic on.
Within 180 days.
Within 100, we'll give you 180 days. And if some, you have the option, if for some reason that timetable's coming and something came up, you can come back to the board and request an extension, but you can't let it expire. You have to ask for an extension prior to it, that timetable happening.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you say that the, about a note that the site doesn't exceed the maximum coverage allowed in aquifer protection?
I sure did, now. And did, are they Zone A or Zone B?
It looks like Zone A.
Zone A, okay.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Coffin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. You are good to go.
On your way.
Yep.
Thank you. We have to go.
Glenn will tell you everything you need to know. And good luck.
It's definitely a needed service.
Next up is a proposal for a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit, and that is being proposed by Christopher North Bashaw and Moira J. Bashaw at 49 Danville Road, map R22, lot 54-2, and I'm assuming by virtue of your relocation that...
I have recused myself from the board and I am now in the applicant seat. So if you'd like me to start, I will.
Sure, let's hear it.
So before you, we have an application for an accessory dwelling unit. We have an already permitted and authorized barn that we built on the property, so that structure is, I mean, all the walls are up, roofs on, all that stuff, we're just kind of held up on some supply stuff of others, but we're looking to convert part of that barn that we've built into an accessory dwelling unit. My mother has been living with us part-time for about 12 years and she had an intention of selling her home up north, and so we kind of assumed that at some point that would happen, and even up in Jackman, Maine, a property managed to get under contract within like two days. So she has since sold that home, she is living in our, in our home full-time now, and I think we want to create a space for her. So I built the barn with the intention of allowing enough space that at some point I could do an accessory dwelling unit. I did have SEC and associates as my engineer, Charlie Zilch couldn't be here tonight, so that's why I don't have Charlie presenting this. One thing you noticed in the packet is Charlie, I think just out of force of habit, and he submitted a waiver for mandatory preliminary review, but this accessory dwelling unit is not a site plan and it is not a subdivision, so it actually doesn't require that. So we're gonna, I'm going to withdraw that, that Charlie has submitted for the waiver of the mandatory preliminary view because it's not applicable in this manner. But, so we have a two-acre lot, it's 87,000 square, 87,071 square feet. We do have the 200 feet of frontage on the north side of Danville Road. This lot was created from a subdivision in 2003, the home was constructed in 2004. The dwelling is currently a five-bedroom, single-family residence served by its own septic system and onsite septic system and water. Sited on the northwest of the dwelling is a 40 by 80 square foot barn, one-story barn, actually I should say 84 square feet, it's 40 by 84. It's a one-story barn that we built, it's very tall, has tall ceilings. It is located entirely within the single-family residential zone and actually, on this it says only a small strip along the easterly lot line is within the aquifer protection district, but if you look at the new aquifer protection maps that were recently adopted in the past couple of years, not a, none of my property is actually within the aquifer protection, either of the aquifer protection overlays. The proposal is simply to add an ADU. We are not proposing any exterior changes to what has already been permitted through the building permit process for the barn. This is internal changes only to convert to the ADU space. The ADU will contain one bedroom and will be 817 square feet in size. The maximum allowable square footage for the ADU is capped at 819 square feet based off of the GLA calculations on the tax card. It will be served by the same water supply as the existing dwelling and it will have its own separate tank feeding into the existing septic system. Contingency design has been prepared and has at this point been approved by the state, both the contingency, contingency system as well as the additional box for the ADU. So there are no known variances required and we already have received the state approval for the septic system.
I will read the department comment from the fire department, which is dated 10/12/23, and notes comply with NFA and comply with Town of Kingston rules and regs. And that was signed by the fire department. Dennis, do you want to do your comments?
Sure. So I reviewed the plans and the, you know, nice set of plans and it's nice to see the elevation plans as well. My comment, number one, the sanitary disposal system shows forth parking places in front of the garage door that needs to be in the area for turnaround, sometimes not, and are ready to back out onto the street. Similar to what we talked about before, plenty of room for a small turnaround here. I just thought I would mention that. Number two, grading should be provided to show that the roof runoff on the west side of the barn does not fall onto the buyer's property or onto the street. Number three, I presume a walkway will be provided on the east side of the barn for access for parking to the doorway. And four, we recommend that some sort of structural diverging to prevent snow and ice falling off on pedestrian doorway building access points. I believe there's two on that easterly side that were proposed. And there's snow and ice running off the roof, I know that I have that problem my office has. You never know in the whole area, the ice or snow is going to come right off and it might come off the roof, so I think that's something to mention. Number five, there, if there will be a patio or deck in the rear of the building on the sliding doors, it should be shown. Number six, perhaps impervious surface area for lots should be provided. A percent of impervious area should be provided. So those are the only comments that I have.
Glenn?
I'm sorry, my mic wasn't...
I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on, but I can repeat it if you want me to.
Mine, mine is on.
Yeah, three in a minute, so, yeah.
They're there anyway, so I didn't have to.
All right, so I have conditional use permit request by Christopher and Laura Bashaw for the construction of a detached accessory dwelling unit. 49 Danville Road, tax map R-22 lot 54 dash two. This is the first public hearing for this proposal to construct a detached ADU. So the board needs to consider invoking jurisdiction on the application. The application includes an expansion of the existing septic system for the one-bedroom ADU. Floor plans and building elevations have been provided. A new driveway meeting TAF standards has been proposed and permitted by the highway department. That's correct, right?
Yep.
Permitting that, I thought so. The application complies with all the requirements found in Article 206, accessory dwelling units ordinance. And then I have a comment about the waiver, but since it's being withdrawn, the board does need to take action on it. So disregard the last two lines. Those are my only comments.
You worked out the percentages in size. It seems, that was...
We worked that out a lot of months ago.
Yeah, I, I kind of figured, because you said it met all the requirements. And quite frankly, you know, the difference in 30 square feet is, is absolutely, or whatever, is so insignificant compared to the primary thing for detached ADU, which is that it looked like a barn or something. And it certainly appears that the, the only residential appearance is out the back. And, and the front, are those big doors that you have in front, are those like garage, overhead doors? Are they?
Correct, garage doors.
Garage doors, so, yeah, so it's, um, I, it, and you provided the elevations and stuff. So that, uh, that's, that's the biggest, biggest issue, as you know, that we seem to have on detached ADUs. That we don't end up with the presidential states.
And if, and if the board's ready to invoke jurisdiction, I'll comment on all of Dennis's comments.
Just a quick que, can I ask a quick question? What's the standard width of a driveway, one driveway, singular driveway to a garage? What's the standard width of the driveway?
Width, eight feet.
How wide?
Eight feet wide.
So eight feet wide, and if you were to build a turnaround, how, how far would the turnaround be? By a hand and a head, if you were to build like a turnaround to come out of a garage, how far?
You would have a place for the car to park.
No, I understand.
So the 16 feet long and then start a radius for a turnaround that would then be the length of the car, another 16 feet or so for a turnaround, the depth of the turnaround.
Eight plus 16 plus how much more?
You're talking about the length of the car.
I'm talking about a driveway, eight feet wide.
Eight feet wide, yep.
Now I want a turnaround to back in and drive out of my driveway. How far would that be? Why, depth, would you guess? Just a turnaround, not the driveway, just a turnaround.
The turnaround would be the length of the car, which probably 15 is...
16 feet, eight feet, 24 feet. So I'm, the way I'm looking at this plan here, he, for places, that driveway is 40 feet wide. He's got plenty of room to turn around in front of the driveway. If I'm doing my math correctly. If that's 40 feet wide, that's the width of that building.
If you can, I think it's pretty tight.
But, but I would like to offer, unlike the previous application, I do not fall under site plan review.
Look at the sides of that.
I am not subject to site plan review. And the reason that we just put the four spaces on the plan, we could have actually used the room that we have for four spaces in the other driveway and not even indicated any parking in front of the barn. It has to be four spaces for the entire property, not just four spaces for the ADU. Quite frankly, most of the stuff going up that driveway is going to be in the garage or in the barn.
I just, I just, I just thought it might be convenient, that's all, to do it that way. I didn't say it had to be done. So I thought it would be convenient to be able to make a turnaround there to come out. And that's all, that's all I was mentioning for.
Usually the biggest prohibition on turning around on my current driveway is my kids leaving their bicycles there. So I end up backing up the driveway no matter what.
So as Chris pointed out, we have to make a decision about jurisdiction.
I'm moving to invoke the jurisdiction. I didn't think we did that on the...
We did, on the last one?
No, on CP's, I, but yeah, I'm just moving to, we can go jurisdiction.
Is there a second? Uh, motion by Peter Coffin, second by Steve Padfield. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passed unanimously. Would you like to respond, Chris?
Yes. So section number two referenced the grading and the runoff of the roof. I think the important thing to consider is that this is already a permitted structure by the town by all standards. The only thing before the board is the interior changes for the application. This has already been permitted and authorized. But I can tell you the grade lines do show that the area between the barn and the road is lower. It's actually a rock garden area where I have shrubs and bushes that I installed years ago that's designed to capture water over there, to provide water to all the plants within that. And I, I took a conscious effort not to disturb that area during the construction. The engineers' suggestion when we first did this is they wanted this right on the 20-foot setback of the lot line, which would have caused us to rip up most of that rock garden. And I told them that that wasn't an option. For one, I wanted it to maintain that. But I also, it's taken about 10 years for all those trees to grow in. And I did, you know, want to take into account that I wanted the screening of those trees and brushes to stay there so that my neighbor who is, who is here tonight, as an abutter, I didn't want him looking at just a gigantic wall of vinyl siding. So I didn't want to disturb that area. As far as walkways to the parking on the east side of the barn, I intentionally designed this. I have no intention of putting in a walkway. It's just going to be lawn that goes up over there. And quite frankly, I did that to be more and more in compliance with the spirit of the ADU ordinance to make this continue to maintain its appearance as an ancillary building, as a barn or garage. And by, really by adding a walkway or adding a patio or deck out the back, I think it takes, makes it look more residential by adding those features to it. And, you know, and we designed this in a way knowing that there was no requirement to have them. So we didn't do that. Recommendation number four, you know, the roof's been roofed with asphalt shingles. And, you know, I get it may be nice to alleviate those snow concerns, but if it's not a requirement or a building code requirement, I'm really not inclined to do it. Patio or deck, these are not on the plan and not being considered at this time. And the impervious area should be provided. Like I said, if you actually look at the updated maps, my entire property is no longer in any part of the aquifer protection overlay. Previously, if it was, it would have been in zone B. And it was a tiny sliver on the other side of the property of where this was being constructed. But just a quick calculation, if you took the size of the barn, the size of my house, the 50 by 50 basketball court that's out back, that equates to about 9,000 square feet of impervious service with the, those buildings. And at the 25% mark for two acres, I, you know, unless I have, unless I have about 15,000 square feet of driveway that I'm unaware of, I wouldn't be even becoming close, even if my property was still within the aquifer B overlay. So we're not looking to provide that data at this time.
Um, I think Glenn had really nothing to respond to, so, okay. You mentioned your neighbors here.
Yeah, he was notified and I see him here, so.
Any, any public comment? If you want to come up, state your name, your address, and then anything you'd like to share with the board?
Just going to push that to the end of the screen.
Hi, my name's John Dennis. I'm the neighbor of Chris. I live at 51 Danville Road, Kingston. And, yeah, I have no problem. I just, I just, I saw the new garage going up. It was fine. He's not very tastefully, which is nice. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going commercial. They're going to certify the let it, so I'll say, oh, what's he doing there? I have no problem making it into his mother's place, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Any other comment from the public? Close public comments? And any further discussion by the board?
Yeah, I finally found the right map. Trying to blow this up so I can get the lot numbers on here.
If you want, the laminated, the bigger laminated sheets downstairs are probably easier to look at.
No, this has got the best, this is the electronic version is the best. So you're on the corner of Ball and Danville, right?
Well, corner of Danville and Ball Road, two Ball Road, which is right on the corner. You can see where the, you know, the yellow is right in their property. I'm going just to the left of that.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, yeah, that's completely clear. Yeah, I thought for some reason you were on the corner of Ball.
Yeah, like I said, one tiny sliver used to be, but with the updated maps, it's actually not in the aquifer protection overlay. And I got notified, we're down to the permitting assessing department. And she's putting a note with the assessors to make sure that gets properly up in the tax card.
Yeah. Doesn't on.
Anything further from the board? Um, can I ask, so as far as the way you're writing for that Charlie submitted?
We don't, I withdrew, I withdrew.
You withdrew it, but we don't need to acknowledge that any further than you withdrawing it?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you for anticipating that question.
Charlie, I go, why is this in here? I go, is there something you know that I don't? And I think it was force of habit.
Yeah, I thought the same thing. I saw that. It's like we have never done a preliminary review on a CUP for ADU.
Would anyone like to establish an motion? Or any other action?
Yeah, there's, there's no conditions on this, right? So this is, should be pretty easy. Move that we approve the ADU, conditional use permit for an ADU as presented in the plans of SEC dated whatever the, September 21st of 2023. I think that's it, isn't it? No conditions?
There's no conditions. Exactly.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Peter Baiki. Any further discussion?
And I am fully aware of the impact fees that will be required prior to getting our fifth kind of occupancy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
It is always a pleasure working with the Kingston Planning Board.
And we used to tell people they had to record the county, but that's no longer the case, right?
I know their D's are bad.
Yeah, Glenn, we don't, that doesn't have to be recorded on their D or anything, right?
All right.
That was the old ordinance.
Next up, we have Centerview Hollow Land Company, LLC, Smallpox Road and off Route 125, map R-19 lot 30. And this is a site plan review application for an amendment to a recently approved earth excavation and restoration operation. You know the, you've probably heard it six times now.
The greenland's on, so. I should get it, I hope. So Tom Schaumberg of Civil Design Consultants, here for this application for an amendment to a recently approved excavation and restoration operation for the property located at tax map R-19 lot 30 on Smallpox Road. The initial application was filed for Smallpox Realty LLC. It was approved in September of 2021. Since approval, the property was sold to the current owner, Centerview Hollow Land Company, LLC, in February of 2022. As the new owner, Centerview transferred all permitting to their name, fulfilled all outstanding conditions, and began the excavation work shortly thereafter. The subject property, recently merged lots 31 and 30, is at the southern end of Smallpox Road, where it contains approximately 149 feet of frontage. The property is also served by a 50-foot wide right-of-way that runs along the east side of Route 125 for approximately 732 feet. The lot is located within the rural residential zone as well as within the aquifer protection district. And an ever-source electric easement runs through the center of the property. Currently, the owner is approaching the limit of the depth of excavation as established on the previously approved site plan. This limit was eight feet from the seasonal high-water table on the property. This depth was determined through test pits. Test pits were performed by Ferwarda and the town's agent, Michael Como, to establish the seasonal high-water table. At the time, all attempts to actually reach the high-water table were limited by the test pit walls caving in due to the depth of the water table and the soil being sand. So the original depth used was determined based on the depth of the pit bottom. In order to establish a true depth to the seasonal high-water table, Centerview installed three monitoring wells. Based on these readings, it was determined that an additional three to four and a half feet of additional material could be excavated from the property while maintaining the required eight feet of separation. Upon requests from Lenny Lord of the Rockingham County Conservation Department, additional test pits were performed to ensure that the data from the monitoring wells was correct. Now that excavation has taken place and the elevation of the property is lower, it's possible to actually reach seasonal high-water table in the test pits. These pits were performed in March of this year and verified the data from the monitoring wells. So the application before you tonight is to include the additional depth of excavation to the site plan. This will increase the total yield from 55,000 cubic yards by an additional 8,600 cubic yards for a total of approximately 63,600 cubic yards. This excavation will be entirely within the original excavation area. It does not add any additional disturbance outside of the previously approved limit of work. As with the previous site plan, the proper buffer shall remain around the three ever-source transmission line poles. And additionally, this operation remains subject to all notes, restrictions, and limitations as noted on the previously approved site plan set. At this time, I'd be happy to hear any feedback and answer any questions if I am able.
Before I read comments submitted by the Director of Public Works, I just want to make sure, well, I'm going to have to read it regardless because it was submitted for this proposal. So his note reads, "What is the status of the road bonds that Lewis Builders and Dan Parks both were required to have for these projects on Smallpox? I'm unsure of the specifics of those agreements, but would ask that a review be conducted before approval to ensure the town is protected and conditions are being adhered to." Is that a different site altogether?
No.
No, that's the same.
It is correct, okay.
That's the correct, those are, those are salient comments from our Department of Public Works. I did verify that both bonds still exist, both agreements are still in place. There is no indication that they have been, that they haven't been adhered to. And so I, I have, I don't think they cause any concern for going forward with this project.
Because were they officially transferred from Joe Wilson to?
Yes, there it is.
I'm just going to call it Lewis by default.
There is, there is a bond in place. Well, the bond was actually cut by Lewis.
Yeah.
But yes, there, there is, there was a replacement bond for Joe Wilson that was assumed by Willis.
I was going to say, since your mic is on, do you want to read your comments? But you turned it off, but if you want to turn it out.
I left it on.
Okay.
So I have Centerview Hollow Land Company, LLC, a site plan review for expanded excavation and restoration of land on Smallpox Road, referenced as tax map, oh, referenced as tax amp, and lot number R-19 dash 30. This is the first public hearing for this expansion proposal. And as such, the board should consider invoking jurisdiction on the application. The application includes a request for a waiver to the mandatory preliminary review. This is requested because no additional area is being disturbed by the proposal. The request is to excavate deeper than previously permitted because new test pits and the installed monitoring wells have been able to better verify seasonal high-water table. monitoring wells have been able to better verify seasonal high water table, and this permits a deeper excavation. The RCCD, which is the Rockingham County Conservation District, serve as our consultants on this project. They were authorized to engage with the applicant earlier this year. That was done, their report, as summarized, agrees that now there is better information about seasonal high water table and how much could be additionally excavated and ensure the eight-foot separation that we require. So this seems a no-brainer. And that's right up, right, right by my wheelhouse, no brainer.
Dennis?
No, I reviewed it and I agree, the consultants that were involved in reviewing it are very reputable, so I agree that what's being proposed is acceptable to me. I don't see any reason of any objections from my point, so I have no comments.
Make a motion to invoke jurisdiction. Second that.
Motion by Chris Basha, second by Peter Coffin. Any further discussion?
Yeah, what was the, what were the numbers again for the seasonal, what's the, the delta between the bottom of the excavation and the top of the seasonal high water?
The required separation is eight feet.
Eight feet?
Eight feet, yep.
Right, yeah, okay, that's in our ordinance too, I just was wondering if that, because that's the actual.
Yes.
So, and so what is the, you're actually going to go down to the eight-foot line?
Yes, I will be, yeah.
And I just, out of my own curiosity, I went out to look at the site this weekend to, I looked at it from the Dan Parks excavation site, and really, the top of his pit is probably 30 feet below where they're looking to do excavation, and even when he's not actively draining the pond, like the seasonal high water table for him is still a few feet down from the edge of that, so it seems like they have a lot of, lot of room. I mean, the biggest concern is they just comply with all the requirements for the sloping and grading near the unitile easement stuff. But yeah, it looks like they're going to have, there's going to be plenty of separation.
Right, and I remember when we first approved this, the plan included a reclamation plan that was going to level it out, there was a not yet proposed, but the idea was to make it buildable. So this was still, at the lower elevation, still produce enough elevation above the high water mark to produce septic systems, or is that?
That's what my understanding, yes, is that after the excavation is finished and the restoration begins, is a single family could potentially be constructed, or it could be a buildable lot, rather.
Okay, so that part wouldn't change, it would still be reclaimed to become buildable lots?
Yes.
Motion on the table.
Yeah, motion on the table, do we, any further discussion, or are we ready to vote? So that was a motion to invoke jurisdiction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Cast unanimously.
I'll make a motion to waive, grant the waiver to waive mandatory preliminary review based on the fact that there's no changes to the square footage area, it's only depth, and it looks like we have improved data available due to the monitoring wells, and that's been verified by the Rockingham Planning Commission, as well as the reviews conducted by the town engineer and the town planner.
Second that.
Yeah, RCCP.
Them as well.
Motion by Chris Basha, second by Peter Coffin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Cast unanimously. Any public comment? No? Okay, closed public comment? Any further discussion?
Yeah, just since this is a change, we don't have to redo the CUP, right? Because the, the, this is sand and gravel excavation, other mining provided that such excavation or mining is not carried out within eight vertical feet of the seasonal high water table. That is, requires a conditional use permit, now presumably they, that would.
Correct, we would not need to do a conditional use permit.
Because we already have done one, right?
Correct.
Yes.
I will make a motion to grant the amended site plan as presented, noting the granting of the waiver of mandatory preliminary review with no conditions associated.
Motion.
Yeah, I would also add that, I'm sorry, I didn't have time to read all these, that the conditional use permit that was granted earlier should still show up on these plans. Because we always require that they be on the plans.
Is it on there?
That's, that's, I know you, there's a lot of notes, there's 27 notes. Here, you go, conditional use permit granted September 21st, 2021, okay.
So that was a motion by Chris Basha, second by Steve Padfield, correct? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Also cast unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next up is the acceptance of the September 19th, 2023 meeting minutes.
And I'll move that the, the September 19th minutes be accepted as presented, since they're hard to copy here.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Chris Basha, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Also cast unanimously. Correspondence, we have an invoice from Dana Tresslow, Tresslow Resources Consulting LLC. And there's two separate items on here, it looks like communication with NHAAAL, Stonehill Environmental, and TES on monitoring these in schedule, and review reports and provide evaluation of monitoring results. Total due is 770. Can I, um, do I have a slide?
We don't need to both.
Can I stand, I have a purple marker, and that's ridiculous. Next up is an email from Code Enforcement to Glenn. So this is in regards to the Brezner Hand Storage on New Hampshire Route 125. Glenn, as we spoke about, the lights are compliant with the town ordinance. The lighting cut sheet is attached for reference. These are 15,000 lumens, 110-watt LED fixtures, which have been installed roughly 12 feet above grade for the parking lot. The electrical contractor also did provide internal shielding for the horizontal lighting. I believe glare issue is possibly twofold, the glare off the window and the lack of visual barrier between the property and the lights. Hope that helps, thank you, Kyle McManus. And then Glenn, it looks like you, oh, no, he was responding to.
He was responding, this, this comes about because the board of selectmen wanted to. I can't be allowed to speak in this, I'm sorry.
Well, unfortunately, you have a lot of time.
Do you want me to, do you want me to touch on this, since it's coming from the board's slide?
Why doesn't Chris touch on this?
So obviously, the board continues to get complaints in reference to them, folks feeling they're not being compliant with the approved site plan. The two issues at large were the lighting, so the individual that installed the current lighting also happens to be the town electrical inspector, so we asked that Kyle review the electrical standards and the fixtures with somebody who is not the person that installed them. And that is what Kyle was charged with doing and done. And I agree, I mean, I believe it may technically meet the specifications and requirements, I think some of the bigger problems is the way that that light reflects off all the windows, because it seems to go off the windows and you just, I almost, I almost see that spot reflection on the windows more than I see the light illuminating in itself, but then the other issue is, is that the tree plantings have never occurred. We continued the hearings on it, continued the hearings on it, you know, oh, missed the planting season, missed this planting season, well, then I missed this planting season. Well, I don't know if the plan is to just wait till enough brush grows up, they can see, it's, it's green now, now I can start my second phase, but I think people's concern is that not taking, not holding people accountable to their approved site plans is problematic. And the issue we have is while they cannot continue construction of the second phase while we're holding them up, there are some people that feel that the board should be looking at a hearing to, for revocation of site plan for failing to comply with the initial site plan at all.
But what you're saying is the lighting does comply.
According to our code enforcement officer and the resources that he utilized, he is stating it is within compliance, and I am not an electrician or a lighting expert, so I have no means to contradict that.
So then it's really the plantings is the other outstanding?
Any of the plantings and screening that were required as part of the buffer areas, or to replace the areas where they cut down all the trees that they were not supposed to cut down.
Kind of memory serves me correctly, which is not often. He had reached out, maybe in the spring, with a proposal to either write a check or do something to sort of.
He did offer to pay the amount that, I believe that, it was an offer to pay the amount that the plantings would have cost in the board's consensus, but I, if I chimed in on it, I would have said, well, I appreciate the offer, I don't think it's appropriate that you can cut a check to relieve yourself of requirements that were approved by the town.
That was basically what he said.
Yeah, and so write a check to the people that will do it for that price.
I think that's what we said.
My quick question here is, is that the, the rule is, you shouldn't be able to see the light source. And it says here that any luminaire, and what's the lumens rating on the lamps?
It says 15,000.
15,000?
That's, that's what it says, and then there may be one more zero.
There may be an extra zero on there.
I think there is, so I think it's really 15,000.
Well, it should, does it say? Yes, it is 15,000.
Any luminaire?
The cut sheet says, oh, it does? Wow, that is.
So what is that, what is that, what is it?
Okay, so they're talking about the, the height shall not exceed 25 feet, and then there's a formula for determining the height, so presumably that's what he's looking at, but then it also says, "Any luminaire or lamps rated 1800 lumens or less, and all flood or spotlights with a lamp rated at 900 lumens or less may be used without restriction to light distribution or mounting height, except that, to prevent trespass," meaning light trespass, "if any flood or spotlight is aimed, directed, or focused so as to cause direct light from the luminaire to be directed toward residential buildings on adjacent or nearby land or create glare perceptible to pedestrians or persons operating motor vehicles on public ways." And that, I think, is the, the issue here. And so the luminaire shall be reflected, or its light output reduced or shielded as necessary to eliminate such conditions. And so that has always been the issue. It's not whether the boxes themselves are night sky compliant, because we've pointed out, if you mount them upside down, they're not compliant. And if you can see the light source from off the property, it's not compliant.
But how I'm reading this is it's not the light source that they're seeing.
No, I think it's, it's the light that it casts can't, can't exit from the property. Because we run into this problem with the neighbor across from the fire station. It's so high up, you can clearly see the light source, but it's been determined that it is absolutely within compliance of the ordinance, because they checked the luminaires of how it casts down.
But if you can see the light source, it's not shielded from off the property, it's not shielded then. So that, that light source is coming and hitting off the property.
That's like saying any street light wouldn't be compliant.
That's true.
Because you can see the bulb, because it's so high up in the air.
Kyle's evidence to me was that he went out at night and saw that the light, actually, you see the light reflection onto the concrete at the building side, that the light is directed down by shields that are on those fixtures.
Yeah.
And then he went on to say that the issue stems from both glare on the window and the fact that the topography change between 125 and the business puts the lights at a different place than they would normally be, because the building is lower than the street light. Those were his two reasons to me why there would be the appearance of glare that doesn't disqualify it from being dark sky compliant as well.
Yeah, but I guess, but I guess, I mean, the board, so the board needs to make a determination if they want to take up the issue of the glare on the windows, coming and reflecting off the windows, which.
And the term they use is glare. It says, "Create glare perceptible to pedestrians or persons operating motor vehicles on public ways. The luminaire shall be redirected or its light output reduced or shielded as necessary to eliminate such conditions." So my question is, if you come by there and you observe glare, and I know that we've had some issues with the, the streetlights down there.
Do we define glare in our town ordinances? Because I'm guessing we probably don't.
Well.
Which will always be problematic.
Yeah, so I, you know, I, I would say that if it's glare, and if it's, and, and that's not the only place in town.
I'm not qualified to answer this question.
I would say, but I would say.
Just a non, I, I have gone by the site several times, and it appears to me that the fixtures don't meet what my minds eye says a dark sky compliant fixture would emit. But this is the, now the second or third professional who does say they have an understanding of what's going on, saying that they are constructed the way they were permitted to be constructed and installed the way they were permitted to be installed. So the only, the only other, the only other way to do this is to have a lighting expert. And I don't know if that's what the town wants to do.
The lighting permitted, but that was permitted with the plantings and the trees that were cut down.
I think, I think if we, I think if the board takes up the less ambiguous issue of the proper screening and plantings, that could be, that could also help solve the unsolvable issue. It appears. But the board needs to make a decision on whether or not they want to take it to the point where, I mean, the, you know, the site plan, site plan revocation or violations of site plan have to be heard by the board and then be recommended to, to the board of selectmen for enforcement.
Well, the board has, the board has over several years now given Mr. Brezner every opportunity. I mean, I've had at least three conversations over three years, being told that, oh yes, if you allow me the next planting season, I'll do this.
And I can't remember, did we ever say if, okay, if Steph is going to be hearing for site plan revocation?
I think, I think that the planning board made a recommendation to the board of selectmen to enforce, when we had non-compliant, we passed it off to the board of selectmen for enforcement.
The only thing that could be enforcement action, I think, is the lighting, the planting could only be enforced through site plan, recommend, a formal vote to revoke the site plan based off of the non-compliance of putting it in.
Yeah, well, you're, you've already gotten the recommendation that he has not met the deadlines that we've extended and had in place for that.
But the board of selectmen cannot revoke their site plan.
Well, but before revoking, revocation, you can put in fines for, you know, for every day past the deadline, and it's not installed or whatever, you have the fines, you have the finding.
I don't, I don't think we have a failure to plant trees ordinance that has a fine attached.
This is a site, this is a site. Site plan compliance, and.
Okay, or is it just non?
It is, it is still part of the site plan. So it's still, it still becomes. It is, it is still part of the ordinance. So it's still, it still becomes a code enforcement issue for the site plan. And then you absolutely could go by way of injunction or some sort of, um, uh, process in court to cease and desist. And if he doesn't cease and desist, start assessing fines allowed through the, the, some more of incident penalty laws.
Yeah. The, the, the request.
So many times.
Yeah. And, and, but everyone keeps kicking it back to each other.
Yeah, but the request.
It's a bigger problem.
The request is still there for enforcement of that issue. And it's, and you can consult with the attorney or whatever, but the, the request was made from the planning board for enforcement to the select board. And, uh, you know, you've, you've tried, but, um, you still, you still, the board's still in your court as far as enforcement.
I guess I just look at as, so now we're going to hire the attorney, spend thousands of dollars to just start this process to assess fines when it's actually cleaner. Don't get me wrong, there's still another issue at hand. When the town has revoked a site plan in the past, they haven't had any teeth to back it up. So there's kind of a two-fold issue here where we have all these rules and regulations, but a lot of times they just haven't, nobody's wanted to take it fully to task. I will say the, the previous board did take some site plans to task, whether it was, uh, Hoxridge, uh, you know, and, you know, luckily the town prevailed in that. I know we've taken some other ones, but.
ESI.
Yes, ESI.
ESI, yeah. We won that one as well.
Yeah. But we won it, but they still operated for four years after we revoked the site plan as if nothing happened.
We revoked the site plan. That hinders the future development. I don't think that's gonna bug him much, but it does have a certain amount of teeth to it.
Well, if you wrote the site plan, uh, that, and, and you can, enables a cease and desist, it has to stop, stop business.
But if the town's gonna move to a point where it's willing to revoke a site plan, the town has to be willing to have the Department of Public Works put Jersey barriers in front of it and force them to seize all activity on the site.
Right.
Oh, it's not right.
It would wake them up. And, I mean, it's not like you can't do it. It's just not doing it. I mean, you go by a class style, it doesn't look like that. You go by the other, they don't look like that.
So I guess I just need the board to make a decision of whether or not they want to take it up as a hearing to revoke a site plan or if their official stance and I'd want it by vote that they, demanding that the select board take it up as a code enforcement issue.
Again, you're, you're saying that, that recommendation.
It was recommended for enforcement. I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't recall what, what language we used back then, cause I think everybody was kidding. And the, the problem we've had is that we've been trying to get a code enforcement officer in place since we adopted the ordinance on it and there hasn't been anyone with skills and experience to fully take that on.
So you're saying the, the select board is recommending, is requesting that the planning board, uh, they want to know what the, we're just saying, we continue to get complaints. So they want to know what the, I guess they want to know what the planning board's preview. There's two options here. You can either say, no, we demand that the select board take it as an enforcement issue through code enforcement, or you can decide to hold a hearing for site plan revocation.
But to Peter's point, if the last action of the board, this board was code enforcement and that didn't happen.
And part, and, and part of it is because we really don't have a code enforcement officer right now. We have, we have a part-time building inspector who is trying to dabble in code enforcement until, but we did just authorize putting out a post-in for the full-time position again.
So I'm thinking about this and I may be wrong here in terms of revocation of the site plan being sort of the last, the buck stops there. If we have not exhausted every other option up to that point, including code enforcement and the select board pursuing that avenue, I don't know how that would stand up if we hadn't gone sort of the less restrictive route first.
And I'm fine with that. And there, and that, like I said, I don't have the minutes in front of me of whenever the, we did this last, but you gotta remember the current select board is pretty much all mostly new people that were probably, you know, there's maybe two of the, two of the five may have still been there when this first came up from the board. So even if it's redundant, if that's the board's wish, I would prefer they take a vote to, to.
So I, I was wondering, you're talking about planting season. I would think that you still could plant trees now until the ground fruit freezes. So, uh, I think that you could probably, wouldn't it be a procedure to give them a deadline before you say you're going to with, 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 with rather site plan? Give them a deadline of December fifteenth, or if you think this fall is too late, then give them a deadline of April thirtieth to have the trees in. If not, site plan gets revoked. So at least put a deadline for them before you all of a sudden revoke jurisdiction.
That feels like a habit.
Yeah.
I, I, I think the April deadline would be better. This is kind of a tough time of the year, you know, we're going, you're going into November, right?
Well, it would have been nice if last spring we said by, by September first or well.
Which to be fair, I think we did.
Yeah.
And I think, I don't quite work, but I, I.
But I, I think the, the was more, you'll be referred to code enforcement, but if it's do this or you'll be referred for a site plan revocation, that feels much different.
Well, then, well, then.
That's more, that's more teeth in it.
We lost all options. This is what we're looking at. Doesn't that just bypass code enforcement? We don't even need code enforcement if we're trying to revoke the site plan.
Correct.
So we give them that April deadline and say, this is what it is. And you, you'll be looking at site plan revocations.
Or you'll be at the Jersey barriers.
Yeah. Which, it's, it's the only way to be effective.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause once, cause it's not, cause at that point you're not only prohibiting expansion of the site, you're prohibiting the current use of the site. When you have customers that are paying to be there, I would say that it's a highly motivating factor to comply.
Yep.
Now, I'm no bad ass guy. April thirtieth is plenty of time. Spring thaw, get in what you need.
These are planted with machines and dump.
Are dump, care about.
But I mean, the trees will survive too, is the other concern.
It doesn't have to be April. It could be the end of the year.
Yeah. Yeah. But, but I think our intention is that they survive.
Right.
I don't want that. Well, I planted them. They're dead, but I planted them.
I think the regulation says that they have to.
Provide. Okay. Yeah. Okay. So would everyone feel, feel comfortable with us telling, having Glenn contact him, say, the board is, the board is giving you a deadline. If at that time it's not done, they will be conducting a site revocation hearing?
I, I don't think.
No. No, we don't, we don't need that. We don't need that authority from the select, select board.
No, yeah, the select board has the right to. There's a process we have to follow. It's, it's all within our authority.
I would just prefer for me not, not to make the motion because of my position on the select board.
Can you find, can you find, Robin, I know this is on, can you find, somebody find the, uh, originally proposed planning schedule he had? We have that on file, right?
Yeah, the most recent one, too, yeah.
Yeah. So we can kind of look at that.
Do we need to do that to make this motion?
Nope.
I don't, I don't think so. There's, there's enough, there's enough history in this Roman knowledge of it.
April thirtieth?
April thirtieth?
I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure I have never had a conversation where my last statement was, when this dead, this deadline passes, we will do the process to revoke your site plan. I've, I've never said that to anybody before.
And I, I think, well, he probably isn't feeling as many complaints at this point about the lighting, but I feel like if you understood that this is the, the means to be entered for you on all, all of us.
Yeah. Listen, I want every business to succeed and thrive.
The board should probably vote okay.
Was there a motion?
All, all I heard was a, you know, not.
I'm not making a motion. Yeah. Um, so how, how do you want to word this? That all plantings?
If I were to make a motion, I would say that
The required?
That, that, that the required plantings as, as required by the, by the site plan need to be adhered to by the date of April thirtieth, or the board will plan on scheduling a hearing for site plan revocation.
Okay.
So.
So moved. About to say that one, yeah, yeah.
I would say, I would say.
If I were to.
And then.
Yeah, complete.
Completed by April thirtieth. Not, yeah.
So who wants the motion and who wants the second?
Doesn't matter.
The, I'm here first. So Peter.
Yeah. He did the so moved and I'll do the seconding.
Peter with the second.
Second and, and you approve the completion. Is there the completion?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Now with that, is that.
Actually, you know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain from that just in case we become, the select board has to become some sort of a pellet in this.
Final abstainer on this one, Chuck.
I hate abstaining.
Do we have any other business to discuss this evening? Yes.
I got a stern reminder from.
Up to CIP?
Yes.
I told Glenn on Thursday I would get this, and those requests out.
So what that is, the capital improvements plan has to come through the planning board and the town planner. Uh, and.
I would do that first.
So he will have that out so that the budget committee can have any of those recommendations for items to be put into any budgetary concerns for capital improvement projects.
Glenn, we have already received some of that, uh, successfully avoided participating in this project or anything. Uh, you talked then.
Right.
Burley, you're in writing on the Brezner Hand Storage.
Needs to be in writing, writing. Yeah.
Peter and I just figured that out ourselves.
I heard a phone call, sorry. All right. Anything else this evening? So we will adjourn as of eight forty-seven PM. I was gonna say Second Street, uh, everything passing unanimously, but you abstained.